I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is July 23rd, 2024. Could I have the roll call?
Customer Knutson.
Here.
Vogelzang. Nguyen.
Here.
Peterson. Goodrich.
Here.
We have three of our five council members with us this evening, so we do have a quorum. And best wishes to Councilmember Peterson. He's out ill. Councilmember Vogelzang is traveling with us, or traveling, and that's why he's not with us this evening. So we have three of our five council members present, also the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the deputy city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Nguyen, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next item, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. And I do think we have some folks that are here to address us this evening. Will you please step up to the microphone? You sign in and tell us your name.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jerry Fortune. I live at 2158 Scanlon Farms Road, Coralville. I'm here with my family, my wife and two kids. The last couple months have been really difficult for my family and I. On May 24th, we experienced a flooding incident at our house. At the time, it wasn't that bad. It was about two feet. We brought it to the attention of the city by talking to the property developers, and I also talked to my homeowner's insurance. All my attempts to get the problem resolved failed. D.R. Horton, the property developer from my neighborhood, essentially said that they had constructed a building in accordance to city ordinances and obtained the city occupancy permit, which is how they got to sell the house to me. My insurance was saying because the flooding occurred from water that originated from outside the property, it's not covered, especially because I don't have homeowner's, sorry, flood insurance. And then, of course, I'm stuck with a bill to clean it up, to get everything back into order, because no one was helping at the time. We went out of pocket and paid our CFPo to come in and clean the house. Unfortunately, just after a month, I think on July 25th, falling another shot incident of rain, my house was flooded again. This time, it was six inches or more of water. We got a fire department to come out and help drain the water, and I still again reached out to D.R. Horton about the same situation and still got the same response to them. As we speak, my house is still in the same condition. Everywhere is molding in the basement. Everything in the basement is pretty much destroyed. And it's been really difficult. Estimates for cleaning and just mitigating for damage is about $9,000. That doesn't include repairs for anything. I tried getting some other estimates for repairs that I got, I think $29,000 or $30,000. This is way more than we can afford, and we are suffering. My wife is four months pregnant. I live with my mother-in-law and my two junior brothers, so we're all cramped upstairs, and we're suffering. And D.R. Horton is not doing anything to help us out despite many pleas. Prior to this, when we moved into the property back in November of 2022, my neighbors and I complained about water just standing around the yard, and they said they were gonna come in and do some reconstruction of the flooring and all that stuff, of the regrading of the floor, of the land, sorry. But that never happened. And then, as time went on, you know, we eventually went out of warranty, which is, I guess, the play we're making at the time. And at the time, there were two other houses behind mine that were not built at the time, so we didn't get as much water running to the yard. So now, we're stuck with this situation where we have all this damage to our house, lots of property, and lots of use of that section of our house. It's been, I think, almost a month now since that happened, and we're still just struggling to get our feet on the ground, to figure out what's going on, and how we can navigate this situation. I've been here to the city hall, or to the city hall, I guess, and I've talked to a few people. I met Amy Foster, who I also talked to the mayor, and I met Amy Sfora, I think I met with Mrs. Hay over there, too. And we talked about, you know, the available resources that I can get, and so far, we don't qualify for any. But our problems still remain the same. Now, this is particularly bad because, you know, we are the small guys. When we're living in a structured environment like this one, we expect that there's some, I don't know, rules that people go by. Now, D.R. Horton is saying, because they obtained a certificate of occupancy, it means they did construct the property and the grading, everything was done right. And that, I spoke to one of the regional construction managers who said the city gave them an occupancy permit, which is how they got to sell the house. So then, they're not responsible for anything that happened. I did talk to one of the warranty manager who once came out and then saw what was going on. I essentially said the same thing. So we're suffering, and they're still making money out there. They're still developing the whole area, and they're still building. I don't know about other people's struggles, but I know in my neighborhood, there's been plenty of complaints of some other sort that they've been dealing with. So far, all in of mine, because I think mine has been the gravest. So what I'm pleading is, you know, for you guys to see how you guys can come out and help me. This company needs to be held accountable as well, because, again, they're building everywhere. It's not just in this community. They're building. You travel out to Des Moines, and half the way, they're building everywhere. You go down to see the rapids, they're doing the same thing. But if they're not building houses that, you know, are meant to last long, that are meant to increase our greater enjoyment of the community, and then, I guess, it's just a scheme to rip us off in the end. So I'm pleading with this committee to help me out, help my family, and, you know, prevent this situation from happening from anyone out there who is still looking into buying a house, or who already is in the house that they constructed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing your story with us. And as he mentioned, he has been in contact with us. I've spoken with him and city staff, my colleague, Councilmember Nguyen has as well. So we are continuing to work on this, and I'm hoping we can find some solutions. So thank you for coming and sharing that with the rest of us, and also the public that's watching. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Okay. I don't think we have anyone else, though. Oh, you would like to speak. We do have one more person. Sign in. You know the drill.
Shane Kron, currently the police chief. Mayor, council, boss, Kevin, Don. It's been a good run. When I was sworn in as police chief, Mayor Lindell asked me if I wanted to say a few words. I did not. In keeping with my general philosophy that the police should work outside the limelight, our only objective being to keep the community safe. But I am here tonight, this being my last council meeting, to say goodbye and to thank the many people who helped me realize my dream. So here we go. First and foremost, my family, my mom and dad, Ron and Linda. I know it was in doubt once or twice, but they taught me right from wrong, and I've always known what was expected. My brothers and sisters, Mike, Justin, and Rach, I never knew that not all siblings are best friends, and I'm grateful to them for that. My wife Marty and my kids Anna, Ian, Sam, and Noah, who knowingly or not agreed to be my partners in this career, and suffered the consequences of my absences at birthdays, holidays, special occasions, dinner, in the middle of the night, oftentimes unexpected and without notice. It's not easy being a cop's wife or kids, but they had my back when I had obligations that had nothing at all to do with them, and they made me proud. To my trainers, mentors, and all the cops, EMS, and dispatchers I've worked with these last 35 years, way too many people to name. I was fortunate to work for and with some of the best in this business. We've been on some terrible calls together, but I always knew we were going to win or lose together. Do good work, come back safe. To the city staff, there is no other team I'd rather be on, and especially Eric at Streets, and Ori at Fire, and Scott in Engineering, who remain our partners in public safety. To the citizens of Coralville, people like Barry, Mary, Jacob, and Kelsey, Wendy, Kevin and Jack, Dolores, Anita and Ron, Bill, Eve, Lauren, Kevin, Mike, David, and Noreen, and to everyone who taught me so much about the relationship between the community and its police, and trusted us to do the right thing, even as others were writing some hateful things in our parking lot. My eternal gratitude. And finally, my sincerest apologies to every person for each time we failed to exceed expectations. This is a tough business. I promise you I did my best, and I'm truly sorry when that wasn't enough. At the 2012 Olympic wrestling trials, I watched retiring wrestlers leave their shoes on the mat following their final match as a sign they'd given it their all. I endeavored to give it my all every day, and so I choose to go out the same way. Mayor, council, it's been the honor and privilege of my life to serve the citizens of Coralville. I never stopped loving this place, and I leave you in quite capable hands. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
It's raining.
Thank you, Chief, for that and for all of your years of service, and we appreciate you and everything you have done for this community over the last several decades. Thank you so much. Okay. With that, we will move on to the next agenda item, West Village. We have a third reading of an ordinance here, and then we have a couple of resolutions, and these items are for developing a combination of residential and commercial uses located at the southwest corner of Oakdale and Jones Valley Boulevard. All right, and do you have something for us?
I don't have anything to add, then. It's been previously said.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. All right, so we'll start with the third reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2024-1004, an ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as West Village, from C2 Arterio Commercial District and R1 Single Family Residential District to R-PUD1 Residential Plan Unit Development One District, introduced to third and final consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I've been communicating a little bit with Dave on this about the parks. I just want to make sure everybody's aware, these will not be public parks that are in there, including a dog park. Just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And I've floated this idea out a few times. Given the changes in the law, I just want to go on the record as at least considering this option for this area, which is considering it as a tip moving forward. And I think, as I look at it, we're using the Oakdale. It's next to Oakdale. It's next to a park that we're working on, that we could use this for. And the tax advantages, we've talked many times about with the new law and limiting growth, does not affect tips. And I floated that to a few people, and I just wanted to go on public record as being at least in general supportive of that concept.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any comments? Certainly, something we can discuss, for sure. I think we, you know, definitely something to put on the table. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Customer Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Okay, now, let's take the first resolution, please.
Resolution approving the PUDA site plan for West Village, Coralville, Iowa, introduced or adopted by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call.
Customer Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And now for the second one.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for West Village, Coralville, Iowa, excuse me, introduced or adopted by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call.
Customer Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank, final seeding and trees. This project is for the final seeding and planting of trees for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank project, and the public hearing for this will be on August 13th, 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting the public hearing for plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Final Seeding and Trees, introduced or adopted by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Questions on this one, or any discussion? Roll call.
Customer Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Urban Renewal Plan Amendments. This amendment would add a development agreement with rebates for IRL Parkview Investments for Lot 3, IRL Parkview Plat 3, to the list of urban renewal projects. Consultation will begin on August 2nd, and the public hearing will be on August 13th. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a date for consultation and a date for public hearing on the proposed amendment number 16 to the urban renewal plan for the Mall and Highway 6 urban renewal area, introduced or adopted by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion on this item?
Is this less than what they've been getting previously?
Yes, but for the first two buildings, they put all those roads in right now. For this one, they're putting a detention basin to the north of the IRL, the hotel parking ramp, and then extensions of River Landing Place on both the north and the south leg, so it's not anywhere near as much as they put in for the first time. So that's why the rebate is less. It was for 20 years for the first ones. This is a 10-year rebate for the...
And it was 75%?
Yes, it was. 75 for 20.
They've all been 75. This is 10 versus 20.
This is 10 versus 20.
Got it.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Customer Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, taxi cabs. This ordinance reduces the number of required taxi cabs.
Wait, wait. Number eight.
What I did... Oh, I am so sorry. Thank you. I crossed it off of my... Never mind. Sorry. Yes. Okay, next item, the bonds. These bonds will be used to finance the improvements to the city's hotel and conference center. Okay, can I have that resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement confirming the sale and providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bond Series 2024B and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Questions on this one? All right, roll call.
Customer Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, taxi cabs. All right, this ordinance reduces the number of required taxi cabs to two, and the number of qualified drivers to two. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1005, and ordinance amending Chapter 127 of the City of Coralville Code of Ordinances 2011, as previously amended regarding taxi cabs, introduced for first adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions on this item?
Why not one?
We went from, we talked over, and they do have more than one, but, I mean, so we went, we just cut it from four to two. That was, that was a...
It wouldn't be a company.
But if they go down to one, they might as well become an Uber driver.
It's a good point.
Kind of get that, but if there's a period of time where they only have one driver, and they're trying to find somebody, what would happen?
We're not going to, if they're in the process of trying to meet the requirements, we're not going to. So...
They didn't ask for more than...
No, they did not.
They didn't actually ask for this. They asked about taxi colors.
Yeah, that's right. It's okay, which we determine.
We didn't have any, yeah.
All right. Any other questions on this? All right, roll call.
Customer Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. I would, next item, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
But, Mayor, I would like to ask Council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to double B.
Moved by Nguyen. Could I get a second?
Mayor, we do have one change that was in there. For item number T, passment number five, that will be, just to comply with the DOT requirements, $215,894.61. So that'd be, in T, that would be the approved passment number five, would be 215-894.61, and then everything else would be the same.
Do we need to amend it, or just...
Is that okay with you? Okay.
Yes. Okay, cool. All right. So where were we? Did I get a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay. Did I get a second?
Seconds.
Okay. Awesome. Roll call.
Customer Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. All right, next item, Deputy City Administrator's report.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chief Kron for his remarks, and note that there will be a reception for him for his retirement on August 1st. That's next Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Brown Deer Golf Club, and the public's welcome to that. Shane has been on the force since 1990, and has been chief since 2017. He has led the department even prior to being chief during some of their most challenging times, and I think he's always served with his whole heart, and I've appreciated him as a colleague. We'll miss him. Then on August 6th, from 4:00 to 5:30, Beyond the Call of Duty, the Beyond the Call of Duty Ride is coming to Coralville, and they'll be at Fire Department Number One. And this is a traveling group. They bring a trailer that recognizes fallen officers from 2022 and 2023. And so Coralville Sergeant John Williams, who died over the July 4th holiday two years ago, will be recognized as part of this memorial for people who want to come out and pay their respects, and that's on the 6th from 4:00 to 5:30. And then also on the 6th, here at City Hall, from 4:30 to 6 o'clock, this is my all-police report tonight, we're going to have candidates for the new police chief on the 6th, from 4:30 to 6. And all the public is welcome to come and meet and talk and provide feedback, and we'd love to see people turn out and meet people. And then, the biographies for the four candidates will be available on the city website by the end of this week. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Mayor's report, you covered most of what I had. Wanted to obviously, again, thank Chief Kron for his decades of service. Really appreciate him. I know that it hasn't always been easy. I know that there's been, you know, there's always a lot of challenge with that job that we don't even know or understand fully as members of the public, you know? We, it's hard to imagine and what a lot of our law enforcement officers see and deal with on a daily basis. And, you know, they still show up every day. They're here for the community. And, you know, Chief Kron was, is, always very passionate about his work and his service, and we certainly appreciate that. And I just have to say that I, I think that Chief Kron maybe needs to become either a par educator or like a public school teacher in his retirement, because he lights up when he is working with kids. He does the junior achievement thing at Coralville Central or that program, and my son is a par educator in a classroom at Coralville Central. And he remarked to me one day after work. He said, you know, your chief, police chief, was in my classroom today doing junior achievement, and he seemed like he was having so much fun with those kids. And I told my son, I was like, you know, he has said that he really enjoys that. And I just saw it on the 4th of July, too. He was out at the tractor pole, just interacting with the kids, and just really, really doing a great job of that, the balloon animals, you know? So I think that maybe he should do that in his free time, but I'm sure he would disagree. He's probably like, "I've already had one high-stress job. Thank you very much. Don't need another one." So we appreciate him. And I did have both of the receptions on my list as well. His reception, August 1st, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Brown Deer, if you want to stop by and say thank you to Chief for his service. Also, wanted to note the open house we are going to have for the chief candidate. So make sure that you put that on your calendar. August 6th, the time was 4:00 to...
4:30 to 6.
4:30 to 6, on August 6th, here at City Hall. And I did this the last time when we had the other candidates, when we hired Chief Kron. And it really is a great opportunity to speak with each one of the candidates, learn about, you know, their background, and as Ellen said, provide feedback, because we are going to have feedback forms, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have feedback forms, so you can share your thoughts. And, you know, of course, you can email any of us as well and share your thoughts with us on this process, and we really encourage that and want to hear from you. And then, the only other thing that I had on my list was the National Night Out. So that is also on August 6th, also on August 6th. And for National Night Out, if you want to host a block party, please go to the website, the Coralville's website. You can fill out a form there, get more information there. We do request, or, you know, hopefully, if you can, we would appreciate it, if you could register your party by July 30th. That way, we know which parties we can go to, and we can kind of split up, because we always travel around and try to get to all of the parties. So really look forward to that event as well. And that is all I have on my list. City Attorney's Report.
Well, all I have is I was wondering what size the shoes are.
There you go.
Kevin?
Oh, I'd just like to say, Shane, I've worked here since 1999 when Chief Kron was Sergeant Kron at the time, so that's when I met him, and so I've worked with him my whole time here. As we also know, he and I are on a football refereeing crew, so we have a lot of fun doing that. And you think that's a high-stress job, and people don't like what you say. You should try listening to that some Friday night. So I just appreciate everything Shane's done. That is not an easy job to do. He's always talked about how they know they're doing a good job when they're not in the news, and they're, it's just they do their work, and nothing's noteworthy. and they're, they just, it's just they do their work, and nothing, it's, nothing's noteworthy, even though they run into situations every day that could be noteworthy, but the, the officers handle everything with such professionalism in difficult situations that we are blessed that we don't have the problems that we see around the country.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, committee and council members report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you. I too want to thank and appreciate our Chief Crone and hope that he will come back and visit often and, and continue to be involved in all those fun volunteer things, too. We do have an event coming up, the Fifth Street Social. We talked about it last, last time at our meeting, and we won't meet again before August tenth, so just want to remind everyone, put that on your calendar. That will be a fun, fun event on Fifth Street, and there is a book sale at the Corleville Library, the Friends of the Library, put that on, and that's coming up just in the next weekend, August second and third, Friday and Saturday. I also wanted to mention that Watermill Kitchen and Bar at the Hyatt received a nice article in the paper, and I had mentioned earlier that it's Corleville's best-kept secret, but I think that the secret is out, and it's really a gem, really a great place to go and enjoy a meal with your family or with friends. Just enjoy the Watermill Kitchen and Bar at the Hyatt. And then eight, eight oh eight on Fifth has a coworking office that Greater Iowa City and Corleville are sponsoring, and it's been there for quite a while, but they have new chairs and tables and just have a great setup. You can rent a space there, or you can have a time where if you want to meet and collaborate with people, you can go to their website at, I think it's, I just typed in eight oh eight on Fifth, Corleville, and the cowork space. So, that's another thing for business entrepreneurs or people that are in business and that, that have questions and how they can be more productive. You can get a lot of information there. That is it. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a few things. So, our library, I wanted to offer my sincere thanks to the library staff for continuing to find ways to serve the community and meet their needs. And so, at the last library report, I've learned that just last month, June, the library has offered to 418 resident who take ELL class, which mean a, a, English as a learning language class. And being as, you know, as diverse as we are in a community, those classes are very important, because it's not just, you know, learning how to write ABC, but those classes offer the people who take them a way to integrate it into our community. So, how do you go to a grocery store? You know, how, how do you buy stuff? How do you pay stuff? How do you take a bus? Where do you find resources? Or simply just have a, a everyday conversation? And those classes are on high demands, and they are finding that they are needing more volunteer. So, if anyone out there who have a little bit of time on your hand and would like to give back, and just, you know, really sit down and have a conversation with immigrant that coming into our community and trying to integrate into our community, contact the, the library, and, you know, they can set up a time for you to just come in at your convenience and have a one-on-one conversation with newcomers who come into our community. And then with Kirkwood shut down in Iowa City, we have seen a rising number of folks who needed ELL class, and they find out that the Corleville Public Library do offer those classes for free, and so those classes has been very, very popular. We have a longtime volunteer who teaches that class, Dave. He has been wonderful, but he, he had filled his schedule to the max, and so he's looking for more people who would like to teach. So, again, if you do have some time and you are, English is your, you know, your, your, your first language, please consider. Yeah.
What was that class that you teach?
It's called ELL, so English learner, yeah, English language learner. It used to be called ESL, which is English as a second language.
Okay.
But they changed that, because many, many immigrants speak more than just two languages.
Right. Sure.
Let's see, I have a whole lot of note here, so bear with me. Wednesday, so from the rec center point of view, on Wednesday, August fourteenth, they are due in fall registration. Can you believe that? We are only in the middle of summer, and we're already talking about fall registration. They offer a free swimming class, so Level One only for five to 10 years old, and that classes are very, very popular. It's a way to keep kids from drowning. We know that there are a lot of community who don't have public pool, and so kids don't have a way to learn how to swim, so this is one of the ways to keep those incidents from happening within our community. So, if you have a five to 10 years old looking to learn how to swim, the Level One class is free, but you have to register very, very quickly, because they fill up quickly. And then on the twenty-first, they offer a recreation pass replacement for free, so if you lose your pass, do come on the twenty-first, and you get them replaced for free. I think they only offer this service once or twice a year, so take advantage of that. And then summer lunch program is still going strong, so if you have kids who are looking to really eat with their peers, bring them to the Corleville Food Pantry anytime from eleven-thirty to one o'clock, Tuesday to Friday, to eat with their friends and, and family members. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Last but not least...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing novel, but I'll reiterate a couple of points. I also want to thank Chief Crone for his over three decades of service, a little bit we've worked with him, and he's been fantastic. Don't hate to contradict you, Mayor, but I'm going to encourage him not to get a second job right away.
Yes, yes.
Take a few months off, at least. And reiterate what Lori said, I, I maybe sound like a broken wheel with regards to Watermill. I've eaten there four or five times now and had great meals. It's a great venue and, and underutilized and underappreciated, and encourage people to, to, to use that facility as much as possible. Give it a try. You won't regret it. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.